Let's go. Roll call to determine the quorum.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Shaw, here. Mr. Green?
Here.
Mayor, I'm present. Ms. Crater is at the round.
Okay, we already expected her to arrive. She'll pull up through the lane. We're heading into Stone. Do we have a stand and have an invitation? Um, prior to the invitation, let us just bow our heels for a moment of silence for Reverend Freddie Smith, Danny McGroove, former sheriff, and Jimmy Christmas, longtime business. Thank you.
Lord, we've just come to you tonight thanking you for all the things that you did for us, take care of us. And Lord, we've had a number of our people that live here in Bastrop that just, I mean, the families need help during this tough time. Lord, just be with us now as we conduct the business and pray and thank you every time we keep, in Christ's name we pray.
Salute, please.
I believe in the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the mayor and the board of all persons. And want to wish each of you a happy new year and thank you for joining us this evening. I have a few announcements before I go into the announcements that I'm going to make. Chris Patrick. Okay. I asked Chris if he would come and give us an update on where we start, so.
Want to now?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I told the mayor I'd come and give a presentation on our projects that we currently have to do under design and construction. The first project is the street sewer project, okay? Uh, we took bids, we're under contract, and we started the video inspection for that this week. Jbar is up there working this week, getting ready to start the pipe bursting and the sewer repairs. And as soon as we get all that complete, then we start with the street rehab, okay? The second project we have under construction right now is the DMV building, replacing the roof, repainting it, pressure washing it, trying to clean up the damage inside the building after the water damage we had inside. Uh, they're out there painting right now. I think they're about fifty percent complete with the painting, and I think they completed all the pressure washing, okay? Uh, the other one we have under design right now is the Bastrop Airport, which is the runway and taxiway overlay. Hopefully, we're gonna bid that sometime toward the end of February. We're just waiting on FAA approval right now, so as soon as we get that approval, we'll be ready to do that project. Uh, the Bastrop LCDBG sewer project that was funded by the block grant, the community block grant, we have designed that, we've sent that in for that, to the health board and to the state for approval. As soon as we receive that approval, we'll be ready to bid that project out. That's the Unity Street area, okay? Uh, the other one we have under contract right now is the Love Louisiana, the Bastrop Parks. That one has been designed, we're advertising it for bids right now, we'll receive bids on that next week. Assuming it comes in the money, we'll award contracts and start it on that project. And that's improvements to all the parks, okay? Any questions I can answer?
Chris, can I, a quick question?
Yes.
On the paved streets that we're going to repair, the pothole fixing or whatever, and when will that, that part of it start?
Well, we're gonna do the sewer first. We obviously don't want to dig a hole in a brand-new street, so we're gonna do all the sewer repairs first, because we'll be digging in the streets to repair all the sewer. Once that's done, we'll fix those holes and then come back and do the street rehab right behind.
Do you know if approvals are gonna be made to the parks?
Uh, yes, we have a cost estimate that we produce for that. It's gonna be some playground equipment, uh, some restroom rehabs, I believe, so it's a mixture of a lot of different things, some lighting, trails, just things like that. I can produce that cost estimate for you and send it up there if you need to look at it.
Okay. Any, any other different parks where approvals are gonna be made at each one?
Yes, yes, it's like nine different ones. I, I can try to, I can try to recycle names on them if you want me to.
No, you don't have to.
Okay, but I think it's at nine different parks, but yes, it outlines in each one what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, because I know you have to go back to my address.
Yes, ma'am, well, thank you so much. If you need anything else, just let me know.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion at this time to go into executive session, please.
I have not asked for a motion.
I, I asked for a motion.
I have not asked for a motion. We're, we're on announcements at this time, and at this time, I'm going to continue on with my announcements.
I'll make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
I have not called for a motion.
You don't have to.
I am going to present interim attorney, Mr. Attorney Devin Jones.
You can't do that, Mayor. You cannot do that.
I'm presenting Devin Jones as the interim attorney.
You cannot do that. You cannot do that.
Okay. I have presented Devin Jones as the interim attorney. Would you like to stand up and introduce yourself, Mr. Jones?
Everybody on board, I'm Mr. Jones. I've lived with Mr. Green, I've met Ms. Moore before, I've met Mr. Shaw. I'm Devin Jones, appointed as the interim city attorney.
We have to vote on, we have to vote on that.
I know.
And we tabled that motion in November. You cannot appoint a city attorney without consent of the council.
I don't.
Or Attorney General.
Oh, I spoke with the Louisiana Municipal Association. Wait just a minute.
They cannot, uh, you can, you can hit it all you want to, but the LA may cannot dictate what we do. It has to come from the Attorney General, Mayor, from the Attorney General. They just can suggest based on cases that they have tried.
Can we, can we just go into the executive?
That's, that's what we need to do. We don't need to talk about this out here.
Per Louisiana Municipal Association, Mr. Pierre was never appointed as the city attorney. I have no intentions of appointing him as the city attorney. That decision was made and it was consented to in July, on July eighth, twenty twenty-one. We were in the midst of clearing up the lawsuit and then finding a replacement. He was never appointed. He was assigned those duties in my capacity as mayor. You never voted and consented for him to be the city attorney.
I think you have a motion on the floor, ma'am.
I do, and that's the legal thing. Parliament should pursue.
Mr. uh, Mr. Jones?
Mr. Jones, can we, we recognize.
He is, he is the interim attorney.
No.
He is the interim attorney by virtue of, of Louisiana Municipal Association.
They, they can't decide that. We have to go with our charter.
Okay, neither can you.
There's a motion on the floor, ma'am.
Yes, and I, yes, I make a motion that we go into executive session. So, we call for a vote.
Mr. Jones, what is your? I asked, and neither, and you're not on this panel, Mr. Attorney Pierre.
Mayor, if, if I could, uh, and I would.
No, you may not.
I think I've said it before, unless and until this city council appoints and approves with a, with a majority vote, a new city attorney, I have to continue to serve, notwithstanding the fact, you need to understand, I don't need to say what we about to, I'm about to say. I mean, you have a motion on the floor.
Attorney Jones?
And if you use the carry, then she's gonna have to carry it, ma'am, that's what I'm saying.
I will carry it.
I think you would need to add the executive session to the agenda.
Okay.
I want to make a motion.
You don't have to add it.
So, this, this, by this motion to derail the entire procedure in this agenda to take something at the top on a personnel matter that is not on this agenda.
You have to let the mayor carry the motion, you can't, she got, she got to call for the question, not to call for the question. If they call for a question, it goes immediately to a vote. If you say call for the question, it goes to a vote, then you go into session, that's the issue.
Mr. Pierre, you were asked, uh, by instruction and to not appear in this capacity.
See, that's what you not need to be doing right now, Mayor, you're right, what he trying to get in that room. Remember, that's, that's the issue. It's a personnel matter, we shouldn't be discussing it here, we should be discussing it there, but I mean.
I believe that if there were.
Devin, you can't even be recognized.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said we need to go into the session, because you right here sitting here.
Where, where the package? Where the package?
That's why it's kind of lighter that we go into the room and get away from all these out here. I think it's lighter. I mean. You can add an agenda item with unanimous vote. But it has to be unanimous vote to expand the agenda.
That, yeah, that's, they're not trying to expand the agenda, they want you to go into executive session, they need to expand it to, to that. There's a motion that's second on the floor, if someone say call for a question, you take a, take a vote, and you go into session, that's where you are. Right rules of order.
I would like to vote.
Uh, what is, um, your request to go into executive session for?
To discuss a personnel matter.
In reference to?
Rodney Pierre. We have two attorneys sitting at the table.
That's correct.
We, Mr. Pierre is still our city attorney. We have not replaced him.
And he was appointed as city prosecutor?
No, he was appointed.
No, the, the record speaks for itself.
No, you divided the duties, somebody divided the duties.
You didn't vote on that assignment. You did not vote on that, so you voted and consented to his being the prosecutor. I gave him the assignment, which I did not bring before this council.
I think what Mr. Angela was saying, ma'am, I, based on the charter, he don't specify if I might be wrong, prosecutor or city attorney, he's just, city attorney is correct.
He, he, it's in the minutes that he was appointed.
He's no divisional.
It was, it's in the minutes.
Yes, ma'am, if, you're right, this one, I think this what she's saying, being that, you know, um, our city attorney, because in the charter, it states that we vote on prosecutor and city attorney, we just wrote city attorney, correct or wrong?
Mm-hmm. It says that she can have up to three attorneys.
Right, you have three attorneys, it never specified what duties you, you do there, which we did vote on it, so with, with that being said, it cannot operate without a city attorney, so.
That's correct.
So Pierre already doing it, so that's why it's kind of needed to us to go in the room to talk, to talk in front of all these great people out, out here.
Because you talk out here, I'm on some, I got something to say. You best to go in front of the room, and I know, I know the law, rules are.
Oh.
Talk out here.
You, you're talking number five.
We have the minutes where Mr. Pierre was appointed city prosecutor, July eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, ma'am.
That's archived in the records. Vacancy was created when Attorney Smith retired. I never brought that before this council.
The vacancy, the vacancy was created for what you created, Mayor, like, so, because when the charter states, you see what I'm saying, the start, the charter states that we both city attorneys, when we both go city attorneys, at that, at that moment, then you declare what position or role you want to play, correct? I'm just, really.
It was, it was decided in that meeting.
Right.
It was decided.
He's been doing it for the last two years.
I'm agreeing with Mayor, this.
There's a motion on the floor.
What you're saying is right, but also too, with that being said, when Attorney Smith was there, Pierre could perform those roles because how the, the charter states that we both city attorneys, is he not a city attorney? Regardless of his role that you want him to, his duties that you want him to partake in.
So, are you saying that Mr. Pierre has exclusive rights to that position?
No, not until, if we vote and consent for another attorney.
Oh, that's, this is, I do intend to bring an appointment, I brought one, excuse me, or, I brought an attorney before this body, twice. The first time I brought the attorney, I believe it was you, Mr. Green, let's take it. The next time I brought the attorney again, and no one made a motion. And as the chief executive of this city, I have a right to have a legal attorney. And I have been informed by Louisiana Municipal Association, an interim attorney until such time that this council is going to take a vote. I have been informed by the Louisiana Municipal Association that the council needs to vote one way or the other, but until such time, I am designating interim Devin Jones to serve in that capacity.
So, the L, the L and A, you, you, you speaking about the L and A?
Yeah.
Well, when you look at our charter, our charter has another element to it, section thirteen.
There's a motion on the floor to go into executive session instead of doing this out here. I mean, I have a motion, it's a second, I think we can vote now.
I put a line, we just say I call for the question.
I call for the question.
No, it's mandated to go to a vote.
All in favor?
Ms. Moore?
More. Oh, yes.
Mr. Shaw?
We're voting for which one?
To go into the executive session.
Yes.
Mr. Green? We have the reasons.
Roll call.
Ms. Moore?
Here.
Ms. Crater, here. Mr. Shaw?
Here.
Mr. Green?
Here.
Mayor, I'm present.
Thank you. That left us on announcements, item number three, and Chris Patrick gave us an update. I have a few announcements. Bill Bowes, the Bowes Law Firm, came and met with me along with a gentleman that is with the music trail, so we're in the process now of applying for a grant through the Lieutenant Governor's Office to do a marker for the late Dr. Mabel John, who was a Ray Lad with Ray Charles, and the police jury is working with us, and we are going to, um, have donors to support this endeavor. I think this is a good thing for Northeast Louisiana. Uh, we just finished with the audit, and you will get a report on it next month. It's, it's still in a pretty much two stages of it, but we worked night and day on it, had to, um, write some remediation plans based on the findings. This is an audit that comes from prior to my taking office, so you will get a full report on that next month. Also, with that being said, all our departments work extremely hard and, which I'm really proud of all of them, and I spotlight them every chance I get, because sometimes, especially when you're living within the constraints of a budget, you don't always have the money to, to give that to an attaboy or add a girl, but you find a way to keep them encouraged. And we just finished with the tax season, uh, which was, yeah, add that on top of audits and information. Sandra works long days, long nights, I stayed up all night, some nights, but we, I was determined that we were gonna get it in, as in the past, audits from City of Bastrop have been late. So at this time, I want to recognize the hard work of staff members, and this is a person that, uh, excuse my grammar, this is a person who would not want any recognition. So I carefully had this plaque written up in such a way to recognize the perseverance of the entire department. And this is the mayor's award of perseverance, presented to the city of Bastrop clerk and staff in appreciation for your dedication, all of you, and hard work towards the goal of making Bastrop better.
Thank you.
I, I took your clock. I took your clock and put it in the, in the front where it's welcome sign.
Yes.
So you can replace that clock.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much, ma'am, I appreciate that. It's very pretty.
Wait just a minute, ma'am, let me do this. This has become a bill.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Chris. We persevere through the loss of employees, the death of employees, but we turn over in the office, but the volume of work never stopped. Uh, Mr. Patrick updated you on the DMV building. We were so hoping that that building could be repaired before the opening of that, um, medical center, but it didn't happen, but it's going on now, so that's gonna be a nice attraction. The lift station, we had a lot of rain the other night, and I actually got out and, and was out in the rain, probably worse crews were out and about, and we, we're short on crews, but I applaud them for the work that they do in the inclement weather. They cannot be everywhere, and sometimes people get really upset, and I want you over here, I want you over there, but we can only be in so many places. Crime update, we cannot ignore that we have a problem, but we are not exempt from any other municipality across this country who are experiencing the same thing. So, by the time the crime problem gets to us, it's at an epic proportion where there's nothing to do but make an arrest. So we're relying on, on you, the citizens, and I'm glad there are a significant number of you present here tonight to help us. If you see something, say something. The likelihood of an officer being in position when a crime occurs is very unlikely. It's gonna take the schools, it's gonna take the clergy, the members of the clergy have already stepped up over in the summer, and, and we just have to work together. I do ask that, um, council members, look at your district and evaluate what is a high crime area in your district, and where do we need to dedicate resources to take a look and, and shine the light? We do have some things in the work, but we just have to know that we cannot legislate raising anybody's child, we cannot legislate morality. Those tools that are available to us, arrest and incarceration, so we need your help, and I ask each council member, take a look in your district, district, and let us know where the crime is more likely to occur. Qualifying date for two council seats for the spring election, January twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh. The Dotson floor, I don't, don't know if, uh, all of you had an opportunity, we are working towards getting a, a date where you can tour. I know, Mr. Green, you've seen it, the Dotson floor.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I did, ma'am, that's.
And, um, we're gonna have it open and set up a timeframe where we'll have employees out where you can take a tour of it. There are a couple more things that we'd like to do. I'm working with, uh, a company to help us get new bleachers to go out there. Industry already provided a new clock, of which we are very appreciative for. Maybe you noticed that our central fire station was also painted. And those are all of the announcements that I have for this meeting, other than announcements, district announcements. Moving right along, uh, item number four. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes, regular meeting, December eighth, twenty twenty-two, and special meetings, December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and December meeting, uh, twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. I'll entertain the motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of a previous meeting.
Properly moved?
A second.
And second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public comments as it relates to items on the agenda.
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
I'm the well-suffered pastor of Bastrop, my name is Charlie Bradford, thirteen twenty South Washington Street. I'm a native of Bastrop, I was born on Short August Street in nineteen fifty-three. My family's been here for many years, some moved out, some come back. I love Bastrop, that's why I'm here, I ask myself, I can be in with the world. And when I come to city council meeting, I'm, this is on the agenda, I guess it's on the agenda, about to appoint an attorney, anytime you're gonna appoint an attorney.
No, sir.
I can't talk about that?
It's not on the agenda.
Well, well, you, you said it's gotta be not, but that's the first thing you discuss.
The, the appointment of an attorney is not on the agenda.
I know, it should have been if you did it. So if you had the intent to do that, you should have put it on, on the agenda.
This is, this is not a permanent, um, appointment.
I don't care if it temporary or not, just one day, it should have been on the agenda. And I respect it, that, that's respect to the citizens of this community. And Mr. Attorney, and I'm gonna ask that you sit out here, because this table is for officers of the out court, she disrespected you. I'm not sitting out here, because I, this is very bothering to me.
Bishop Bradford?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. You gonna cut, you, you sit there, go ahead.
It's, I'm, I'm going by the agenda.
Oh, you're, you're about to do it, and he would have been on the agenda.
Okay.
I wouldn't discuss it.
He is. I'm going by the agenda, Bishop Bradford. What, what other point do you have to make?
Okay, I see on the agenda, I'm gonna move on. Uh, we, we appoint, you do have something about appointing service service board?
Yes, sir.
Do you have their names on here for, if I'm somebody that wanna make a comment about, other words, you, let's do it right, y'all.
And we are doing it correctly.
We gonna have to start doing it right.
We are doing it correctly.
Well, who, who are the people you intend to appoint?
Okay, they, the council members have those names in front of them.
Well, I'm serious, I wanna know.
And when we get to that item, we will know.
Well, I may have to say something, I, this, see, the agenda is out of, you need to get, you really need to, we gonna get it together, we gonna get this together, thank the, thank the council, I think we gonna get this together. We gotta do that right.
Oh, that takes us to item number six, consideration of and action on reports of committees appointed of the governing body. Okay, did we have any reports from?
Here we have number six, the planning and zoning has had a resolution.
Okay.
Okay, and there is someone here to speak on that. Oh, Ms., Ms. Steady's gonna speak on it.
Okay. We had Angela Glady, name, but she.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, Ms. Glady was supposed to be here tonight, but she got called for work and she couldn't be here tonight. Uh, my name's Debbie Rogers. Uh, I reside at fifty-five oh-nine Bonner Ferry Road, and, um, I'm the representative for the planning and zoning tonight. The reason we presented this resolution was because there was a, um, question about a property at nineteen hundred East Pine Avenue, which is inside the city limits. Uh, we had heard that someone was wanting to buy the property and put horses on the property, so we discussed it, we talked to the neighbors, uh, in the neighborhood, and the Planning and Zoning Commission feels that it's not well-suited for livestock of any type to be in the city limits of Bastrop. We feel that it would be detrimental to the city, um, the waste that runs off from horses We feel that it would be detrimental to the city, um, the waste that runs off from horses and cows and pigs and goats and things that when it rains, it, it goes into the ground, runs off on adjoining properties, uh, the smell, the increase of flies, and things like that. We just felt that it wasn't well-suited for the city limits. Now, what we proposed is it will still be allowed at the MAC. We propose that anything that the city council deems necessary, like for a special event, that would be allowed and, uh, at the sale barn. So anybody who has anything currently within the city limits now, they're grandfathered in. We're not wanting to make them move whatever they have now. We just want it to go forward from here, mayor.
Okay, please go on. Uh, do you have the information on existing?
We do have the ordinance on that, and some of those animals, you can't have it. I do know that pigs is something that you can't have inside the city. But they, um, Ms. Ro, the committee did draft an ordinance that we could give to let y'all look over it and get Lincoln Council to look at it to see if it's something y'all wanna do, or they're asking y'all to change the current ordinance, not to allow those animals inside. That's what they're asking y'all to consider, and it's whatever y'all, you know, wanna do.
And this is just for information purposes tonight, and then, um, I think tonight would just be information, and then it would be up for discussion at the next meeting and then vote at the next.
Okay, thank you.
Can you get a copy of the ordinance that you guys wanna start out?
Pardon me, sir?
Do you have a copy of the ordinance that they want?
Yeah, we can make sure you get that for the next one. They just wanted to come and talk to y'all and ask y'all about it. We, we can definitely give y'all a copy of that.
As you said earlier, that some of those, um, animals can?
Yeah, they're, our current ordinance here, they, you can't, you can't have horses and stuff. I know you can't have pigs, and, you know, there are some animals at least that you can have, but we can make sure that you get a copy of what the current is versus what they're wanting to change in it.
Okay.
And then y'all can make the decision as to what you wanna do, 'cause it's an ordinance, and once y'all tell us what you want, then we can, we can, uh, introduce it and then wait thirty days and vote if that's what y'all wanna do.
It can be found under public health laws for the city of Bastrop.
And then we'll be, some, a representative will be here at the next meeting, it, after you've looked at it and, and, uh, discussed it. So we'll be here if there's any further questions that you have, uh, councilman Green.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers, um. We'll get that information prepared.
Yes.
We'll take a look at it from a legal, like, aspect, what's an existing ordinance, where one person's rights began and end, all those, not overstepping any boundaries. But thank you, the points are well-taken, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, reports, where have I missed them? Reports of city officials or employees required by law or by action of the governing, uh, body. Okay. Chief Williams. Update.
Good evening, mayor, council. Uh, I'd just like to say thank you to all of the community for helping out with the toy drive this year. It was a huge success, so anybody that don't answer that call, but really thank you. We couldn't do it, uh, without everybody's support. Um, finishing, finishing up, we trained on four new recruits, uh, I stated earlier, uh, that didn't increase our numbers, we're still at thirty-two. Uh, when I took over, we was at thirty-two. I've hired five. Uh, we're still at thirty-two, even with those new four, so need some help, uh, getting the word out that we are actively recruiting new candidates, so we need to get some in and, uh, get a new group going, D.D.
I can try.
I know it, man, it's a tough sale, but we can't give up, so, uh, that goes for everybody in the community. If y'all know anybody, send them to us, get an application, we'll, we'll get them on the way. Uh. As far as runs for the month, uh, the month of December, we had eighty-seven fire runs. Uh, of those eighty-seven, seventeen of them were structured fires. Uh, naturally, our structure fires increased during the winter months with the cold and the heating and stuff. Uh, as far as numbers for the year, we had eight hundred and twenty-seven, uh, fire runs. That is up considerably. Uh, we usually average about seven hundred, so we're up another hundred, so the, the demand, you know, is steadily going up for fire and rescue, uh, with the coverage area we got. Of those numbers, we had a hundred and three structured fires. That number is up, uh, probably about a thirty on average for a year, so that includes the city and the district that we cover, but that's a lot of structural fires, you know, and that includes, you know, sheds, mobile home, any kind of structure, not just the actual house. Uh, also, that would include a hun, and that, uh, eight hundred is a hundred and seventy-two outside grass fires and stuff, so March was a very, very busy, busy month for us. Uh, we had a hundred and something calls just in March alone this year. When it was dry, uh, wasn't getting no rain, so we had a lot of outside grass fires and rubbish fires and such, so. We kinda knew we was gonna be above normal with our numbers early on in the year with how many runs we was having. Other than that, that's all we have to, uh, update.
Thank you, Chief Williams.
Any questions?
Chief, do we, have we had some problems down in the middle of the square here? Um, do we get that project finished on, on the roof?
You talking, what, uh, what project?
Well, I'm talking about downstairs, on the, on the square, and, or just off of it. And, uh, so anyway, I was just wondering, we're about to get that saved, 'cause I notice we had scaffolding or something under it for a while.
I do, I do look at it.
You talking about the, oh, about a post office?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's been turned over to, you know, code enforcement and stuff. I, I don't do no, nothing with that. We did inspections on it, we report, but other than that, it goes through code for. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Chief Williams? Okay, Assistant Chief, uh, Pace, I kinda hit on it about the crime. Talk to us, um, about some strategies, and of course, we really don't need to let out strategies in a public meeting because that compromises the process, but just kinda tell us what y'all.
I can give you some of the, the numbers so you'll know what we're dealing with. For the month of, uh, December, uh, we had a hundred and thirty-one arrests and ninety-two traffic tickets. For the whole year of twenty-twenty-two, we had ten homicides, nine of which have been resolved, one is still open, and that's the one that just occurred, uh, several weeks ago. I know the sheriff's department has worked several themselves at night. Uh, most of these shootings that are occurring are gang-related. We have joined together with the sheriff's department and the district attorneys to create a gang task force. We're identifying each individual gang inside the city limits, and we're identifying the members of, uh, each gang. If we can get enough information, we can possibly be looking at Rico charges to get it under control. We have eight officers, we have one in the academy, we have one going through the screening process to be hired who would have to go to the academy. So I'm very proud of my guys. We've made a lot of changes over the last six months. Um, we, we try to adapt and we do the best we can. Are there any specific questions I can ask?
I have one, um. The last administration, we brought up the topic, uh, I know there's something called shot fraud. Can you tell me, is that something that we can use here?
Um, Chief Reed supposedly handles that, but I tell you from my personal experience, uh, just talking to some other agencies, uh, it does let them know where the majority of the gunshots occur at, uh, but in town this small, we usually are called as soon as someone hears the shots, um.
So you don't think it'll be violent?
I don't know personally, just speaking for myself, 'cause I can't speak for Chief Reed. Uh, I don't know what his plans are, what his intentions are, but to me, there would be a better use of funds for other tools that we could use to help with the crime, 'cause knowing where shots happened at doesn't help us, because we're gonna know that anyhow. So, uh, that's not the problem we have. Our problem is community outreach. I mean, it, it's a, a gulf with our citizens. Uh, we're dealing with young people who, when they are the victim of a crime, feel pressure from their peers that they can't even say who shot them, whether they're in a gang or not, because they'd be a snitch. And that was new to me. I've been doing this twenty-seven years to make a snitch with someone who got paid under the table to give information. But now the young people believe that if I'm shot, and I say who shot me, I'm a snitch, and that's very hard to combat. I mean, it's, we need the community, because it, it goes beyond what we can do as police officers, and what we need to do as a community to change these young people's minds. They need to start valuing their own lives.
So, from, from each one of our seats, what can we do to help, like, the council?
Speak with your constituents.
What do we do there?
I, I, I know you do, uh, but speak with the older ones, okay? Because even the elders, they won't talk anymore because they're afraid. Uh, then we, we've got to come up with some way where people feel safe speaking to the police. Uh, I mean, until then, uh, our hands are ba, theoretically tied. If we arrive at a scene and nobody will say a word, and there's not a camera around, you know, we left our magic ball in, in fairyland, you know, there's no, so, I mean, we really need a community, and we need everyone to help, because I, I mean, I'm just being honest. I have eight officers on the street, you know? We can do what we can do. It takes the whole community at this point. This isn't a police problem. This is a community problem.
Thank you, Assistant Chief, uh, Pace, uh, another idea. Mr. Green, uh, neighborhood watch. We're gonna look out, and Assistant Chief Pace hit on something, the stigma. People are afraid to say something because they're afraid that they're gonna be stigmatized as being a snitch, but we, we have to change the, the culture. And I was told by Chief some years ago, in fact, when I was in office the first time as mayor, the best alarm system in those eight would be back there waiting.
They'd look at what's going on. That's absolutely correct.
So I think that's what he's saying, you know, if they have it, they don't wanna, you know, they don't wanna speak up.
So we just have, that's one of those endeavors that we have to pull together and think about, uh, neighborhood watch for your district. All right, if we do bills and claims. Okay, all right. Oh, public works, public works. Ruby Camp?
Chris Patrick really gave the updates. I was in Tennessee about the streets, but I wanna thank the public works crew. We welcomed the storm, we had a bad storm come through, and thank Councilman Green, he was out with us, and, uh, we're in the process now cleaning dishes, picking up litter, cutting back limbs off the street. Uh, on Saturday, we gonna start the newly improved Dotson Park Basketball League. So if y'all know anybody that wanna play, tomorrow is the last day, and we did come up with a solution.
Okay.
To let them play. Uh. The other thing I gather is, um, we are, we're in the process of getting our new tractors in. They should be in next month. We got two brand new tractors coming out. We do have a lot more, so when, more season come, we'll be ready to go.
Um, you have a date in mind, uh, Mr. Will Hyde, that we can open up Dotson for tours, maybe for two hours. Think about a time, maybe two to four, um, three to five or something like that, we'll have a walk-through, and that way we gonna have to pay employees to be on overtime.
I think, uh, everybody should come out on Saturday.
On Saturday?
And support the basketball league.
Okay.
If y'all have any sponsors, let us know. Need sponsors.
Also, he, he stated that, you know, he wanted to thank me, but I do wanna thank you, Tira, and James Green, because that they get it raining real bad, just a lot of water came down, and I think all, everybody with James went through these departments and willing to bring people out and in to these departments. Also, we went through a couple ditches, it's way, the water, the pumps are pumping, but we just took on so much water. And the fact that it was still raining, they was out there, so I just, no one, no one out there, but, and I think y'all felt it.
Yeah, the vol, volume of water exceeded the capacity for it to run off in time, and the Unity Street, uh, is gonna be replaced, and, um, Will Hyde has already made assignments to the crews. Some of the problem is not within the confines of the city. Two-thirds of that water that passes through the Unity Street path, it's two-thirds of it, so, but it's, yeah, that's correct. And we have to look at where it originates and then what is impeding it on the other end of it as well, so, and, uh, I think the side of it that's impeding the process of the flow is out of the parish, so.
That's the, that's the way it was going, right?
Yeah, as, as it go to the parish again now.
Something about the, even park area, I don't know.
Mayor, I'd like to just mention to, streetlights, you know, we got a lot of streetlights, and we pay it, we pay it for them. And it'd be good to get that up, and it helps with security. There's lots of good things that come, so anytime you see one, you get the information, who would be best to bring it to?
That's called public work, two, three, 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 four.
Would it be best, or would it be best to just write them down, or would it be best to call?
Write them down.
And just, and you have a poll on this.
You don't have to have all of it, but it's good to have all the, with part of, yeah, part of us gonna have the phone number, and then you got, uh, so.
They don't have a data anymore, energy for those numbers anymore. When they upgraded, they didn't keep all that. So the numbers is there, but they don't tell them they need addresses, so they can go and.
It'd be quicker to do it that way.
You know, last time that, you remember the San Diego, this is the energy for the administration, gave.
Yeah, there's some tape, yeah, and I think I still have some tape that they can mark. That way, when they're driving in the daytime, they can see it.
Okay, um, and we, that's mercy of the energy when they can get around to it as well. Because we did do an assessment initially, I think it was like two hundred and fifty, Mr. Will Hyde, two hundred and fifty.
Yes, ma'am.
Miles per hour.
Yes, ma'am.
So they're basically doing us when, when they can get to us.
I'm sorry, I did have an announcement to make. The West Pine Coalition, uh, Ms. Bunny could be here today. She did, she didn't inform you to, they just run, and Tira and the city workers know that she do appreciate y'all for everything y'all doing on West Pine.
Thank you. All right, item number nine, other unfinished business. Any other unfinished business, Mr. Gold?
You gotta do know what I'm saying, all right?
You need to build a bit of finance. You need to build a seven A finance, you need to build some lines.
I didn't get a.
Then, then we do that. Mr. Shaw? We did the seven A on Finance Committee Report. Okay, okay, let's go back then. Finance Committee Report Resolution twenty-three, twenty, twenty-three, bills and claims for the month of December twenty-twenty-two. Mr. Shaw?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt this, uh, Finance Committee Report, uh, Resolution twenty-two, twenty-three, two zero two.
Properly moved?
A second.
And second? Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Actions on ordinance and resolutions introduced at previous meeting.
Actions on ordinances and resolutions introduced at previous meeting. Is there anything, Mayor, Mr. Jones? Um, item number eight.
No, ma'am, we don't have anything.
Okay, number nine, other unfinished business.
Yeah, ma'am, we, we definitely have unfinished business, um, due to the fact that we, the council walked in, looking for. Um, Mrs. Jones, we also made an appointment, we said we was appointing interim.
Interim?
Interim attorney.
Yes, sir.
Charter don't state that we never had him like that, so I would like to amend it. To just be on the same ground as we seen it until we do it right.
I said, I said in motion.
This, this is not an item on the agenda to vote on.
And that's not the reason I said it. I didn't think it was such a thing as an interim.
Interim?
Yeah, I didn't, I wasn't made aware of it.
There is a such thing as an interim attorney, that, that's a tool that's available to the mayor. So that's not an item to, to fold on, on the agenda.
I make a motion that we expand the agenda for two items. The first one is to rescind the appointment made by the mayor. And number two is to call for Attorney General opinion for these attorney matters.
Oh. This item is not on the agenda.
I call for motion to expand.
The way you just mentioned, this item is not on the agenda for the council to vote on, an interim.
You stated, what, you opened the door, what you said, you didn't, you didn't.
Interim is a temporary assignment, it's temporary assignment. And it's staying, it's been verified. Mr. Pierre, I.
Motion on the floor, ma'am.
I call for the question.
A motion on the floor for something that's not on the agenda?
I'm expanding the agenda. I make a motion to expand the agenda for two items. The first one is to rescind the appointment, and the second one is to ask Attorney, uh, Attorney General opinion, please. Two things.
The item is not on the agenda for you to vote on, so I don't, I don't.
But that's why I was saying, ma'am, when you, when you walked in, you stated that it was your interim.
Interim, temporary, until this council is ready to vote.
You made a statement saying appointment, and that's when we get involved. So I, like I said, I just want to.
That virtue of the office.
Like, I know you say you gonna cover me, I just want to cover me in my position, that's it.
Okay, um. This item is not on the agenda for a vote?
I said it, ma'am, but when you said, when you said that it was your interim appointment.
Interim, it's, it's temporary, until you're ready to vote. I offered, I offered an appointment twice.
I was saying, ma'am, I'm not, I'm not here to disagree. The only thing I'm here to do is just to cover me. Because I, because when I walked in, I, I mean, I see him here, but Pierre supposed to be now. I don't know who or what, what's going on. I just want to make sure we doing the right.
Um.
There's a motion on the floor, ma'am.
I call for the question. Call me, Tia.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
You're voting to expand the agenda for, number one, to rescind the appointment of the, uh, Mr. Jones. Number two, ask him for Attorney General's opinion on a temporary attorney.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Okay. I, I'm unclear on how you can rescind an appointment that is not on this agenda for you to vote on, that you didn't vote on.
I'm not sure how you can rescind a interim appointment or a term. So we all on the same page, that's why we should try to clarify. I, I don't, I.
I, I can clarify. First of all, since the agenda's been expanded, uh, is to address the, uh, uncertainty of what's going on. We went in that, in that, uh, executive session, Mayor, you, you did not come in.
That's correct.
So you missed the dialogue that was in there.
And I don't do an executive session as improperly called. You already have one that's on YouTube that was, was called other.
Fair enough. Well, what, what is happening is that, um, the agenda's been expanded for two items. The vote has been carried, so now you're in your expanded agenda. I'm assuming that you're going to entertain a motion, Mayor, and if you don't want to entertain a motion, because if it's already been made clear what the agenda's expanded for, if you don't entertain a motion, then I'm assuming you passed a gallup to your mayor pro temp to entertain a motion to deal with the two issues that are in the expanded agenda.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to vote on something that's not on the agenda, that is not within the purview of the council at this point to vote on. That's number one. You want an Attorney General's opinion on something that's not on the agenda to vote on. So, eh, okay, if it's the pleasure of this council to vote on something that's not on this agenda?
Let me, let me, let me put you, uh, back in context. Since the agenda's been expanded, Mayor, and it was not posted, just to give the public an opportunity to comment on the expansions on the agenda.
Are there any comments that the public would like to, to make? Well, we first, let's take a vote to expand.
All right.
Once again, uh, my name's Charles Bradford. I'm very concerned about this, uh, attorney situation we have here, that, that's playing out. Uh, if I'm understanding right, that you said earlier that Mr. Pierre was never appointed that position, we got a lot of buildings he been working on for the last two years. I'm sorry, but excuse me, I'm gonna cut this off. And it would only be fair, it would only be fair if you're intending to move Mr. Pierre for some reason, whatever, it should be discussed through the council. He, he's been operating as counsel for the last year, two years since your term, since you came back in. Uh, otherwise, if you remove him, and he was not acting, he was acting illegally, in other words, that'd mean everything we did in our city for the last two years is illegal. And, and advice he gave to this council. Now, that's kind of, see, we're gonna get in that situation, that's deep water. Uh, we've done quite a few things. I think it's only to be right to keep Mr. Pierre until your council get a chance to discuss whatever the problem may be. When he was doing what you needed done, everything was fine. And now, I don't, I don't know what the problem is. I don't, and I don't care what the problem is. But let's not put the city abash and turmoil, because people gonna come up with, for instance, I guess you want, he's not here tonight, but I see he's on the agenda, Mr. Anderson, this, where is he?
What's going on?
Okay, uh, twenty-two, nineteen ninety-three. That's an issue done with the shared department. See, uh, uh, if we knew this attorney now and said he was not acting right, we could go all the way back and address everything, but no. And we don't need that, that's deep water. But let's try to work this situation out with what we have. Whatever is a problem that occurred, y'all need to work it out. I don't have a lot of detail, but what I see as a citizen, I see confusion, and, and, and we need to work this out. Or otherwise, it's gonna get worse with this attorney situation. While Mr. Pierre has been diligent working for the last two years and making, giving this, giving this council advice. Now, you're gonna come here tonight and bring in an attorney and say, well, he was down for the attorney. Wow. I mean, that, that, you're cutting off my, my time, let me go, cut my, my time, she keeping a watch. I got a more time, Miss Gold. Let me know, just wave your hand, I'll sit down with my time, my time. Okay, I keep moving, okay, uh, we need to get it right. Okay, we need to get it right. The, please don't do that. Let's keep Mr. Pierre. Because you're gonna put a lot of candles on, I'm just, as a citizen, and I got some legal knowledge too. Okay? And, and I'm saying, and I know Robert Rule's a lawyer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I, I was, I'm not telling you, I want to tell you why, why I feel like to do. Miss Gold, raise your hand, with my time, Miss Shaw. Okay, thank you, Miss Gold.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, from, um, my seat, my whole idea is the uncertain. Because I, to my dollars, we still waiting on Mr. Reese to come forth on some of the legal actions she performed.
Oh. You have from the council members where Mr. Pierre, Attorney Pierre was appointed as city prosecutor on a motion by Mr. Locke, second by Mr. Prater, and Mr. Shaw, followed by a unanimous vote. Mr. Ricky Smith was appointed city attorney on a motion by Ms. Moore, and second by Mr. Locke, followed by a unanimous vote. That's the action that you took. I did not bring before this council in twenty-twenty-one anything on appointments. I temporarily reassigned some duties to Attorney Pierre. I did not bring that before the council to do that. He was appointed as city prosecutor, and that is the position he holds as of June, July eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
So what do we follow? Do we follow the charter? Are we following the charter?
We follow, we are following the charter.
They said it. So, but that being said, the charter states city attorney, they never don't, they never say.
But what you voted on is, is archived in this record, yeah. But we don't have to.
Let me address it. But personally, I think y'all a little out of order, because the issues that are, that you all moved to expand agenda on are specific. You know, and if you all want to address that other issue that you all are walking down, I'd be more than happy to do that. But y'all are in an expanded agenda with two items that you need to deal with. Either, you know, at this point in time, either the mayor's gonna entertain a motion or somebody's gonna make a motion on the expanded agenda, or you're not gonna move on the expanded agenda. No, I'm talking about, there's, in the expanded agenda, you have two items that, oh, oh, uh, Miss Tappin said that were identified in the expanded agenda. One, for the rescinding of the mayor's interim appointment, and two, uh, for the, uh, seek authority to get an Attorney General's opinion regarding the city attorney scenario. So that, uh, those two issues are what y'all should be dealing with now, not with respect to, you know, what's, what's being discussed now.
Well, again, the, uh, attorney is not on the agenda to be voted on. This is, you know, what is there to, to vote on?
On the, in the expanded agenda, and this is how, I don't, I mean, this is how it should play out. At this time, Mayor, you're in the expanded agenda. You say, well, two items on the agenda. First item, the rescinding of the interim appointment. I entertain a motion to rescind it. If you get a motion, you don't get a motion, it dies. If you get a motion, you get a second at some point in time and go through discussion, it comes to a vote. If you finish that issue up, you move to the second item on the agenda, which is seeking the Attorney General opinion. You would say, I entertain a motion, uh, to seek an Attorney General opinion. Somebody can move, somebody can second. If they don't get a motion or a second, it dies. That's, that, that's simple. So right now, you on the first item, which is the rescinding of the interim appointment. So you should e- either say, I entertain a motion to rescind the appointment, or if you don't want to say it, somebody can say, I moved to rescind the interim appointment.
Uh, Mr. Attorney Pierre, you're sitting here blurring the line of authorities and usurping authority by what you're saying. This is, this, uh, an interim, an interim is not an item to even vote on.
No, nobody's voting on an interim, your honor, I mean, uh, and, and you, your honor, uh, Mayor, uh, Olive. What's on the expanded agenda is a motion, to entertain a motion to rescind actions that you took. The reasons why that motion is being made is because the charter says specifically, any appointment of an attorney, uh, has to be by, with the advice and consent of the council. This gentleman was not presented, uh, for a vote. He, you, you came in and you announced, you were making that appointment, and you don't have the authority to do that. That's all I'm saying.
And what I'm saying is by virtue of item thirteen in the city charter, the mayor has superintendent control over all offices appointed, and I will not leave this city unprotected. If I do recall correctly, Mr. Pierre, you served as attorney, and you were not confirmed, and you fill that vacancy. So does that mean that we go back and undo everything that you did when this, when this same board, with the, with the exception of Ms. Prater?
I'm, I'm not really following what you, what you.
So there is nothing to, now, I'll entertain the motion on the, uh, the Attorney General's opinion, but interim is a tool that is provided by, by the mayor, so to, to allow that to be usurped and allow you to blur the line of authority is unacceptable.
Mayor, I apologize if you received it that way, but I'm not blurring any lines of authority. The items that are on the expanded agenda are very clear. Miss Tappin made those lines clear. So right now, the first item that's on the expanded agenda is for the rescinding of the interim appointment. If anyone makes a motion to do so, and if there's a second, at some point in time to go say vote. That's all I'm saying.
That is ambiguous and it's a twist of words, Mr. Pierre.
I mean, that's something.
And then, and then I realize, understand the game in this. I put the city first. I put the city first.
Mayor, I, and I, and I, I, um, um.
Because, because of the time, I make a motion that we rescind the appointment.
How my care in motion, the appointment stands, if Mr. Pierre.
I call for the question.
Mr. Pierre was never appointed as city attorney.
Miss Gold, I'm gonna call for the question.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Green?
Is it yes or no?
Yes, you're voting to rescind the temporary appointment. That's the vote. Mr. Green, you're ready?
Yes.
The appointment's banned.
Mayor, that is not the vote. The vote is, I don't know what Mr. Shaw's vote is, but it's three to whatever Mr. Shaw said. If he says yes, it's four to zero. If he says no, it's three to one. If he abstains, it's three and one abstention. I don't know what Mr. Shaw's vote was. Uh, did he vote?
No, he said no.
He said no, okay, well, it's three to one, so the motion carries, Mayor.
Your, your statement, I'm one back, what the law was provided to me. This is an interim service until such time that it is brought before the board.
We haven't even seen a contract, Mayor. Your contracts have to come to us.
You didn't see a contract on any of the, any of the others.
We saw Mr. Smith's contract.
That's why I get day-to-day operation confused with le- legislation and day-to-day operation. I see things on a daily basis that the council members do not see. I deal with things on a daily basis that the council members do not deal with. I just spend a month to six weeks of my life dealing with something that I inherited, that I have never, ever brought flat or degraded anybody's name. Now, I look out for this council as much as I look out for myself, but the city is first. What was the other item? Attorney Jones' opinion?
Yes, I'm seeking an Attorney Jones opinion.
I make a motion that we get an expedited resolution for an Attorney General opinion, please, on this matter.
I said. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Prater?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah.
Mr. Green?
And that's what we're saying now.
No, that's, that's Attorney General opinion, sir.
Mayor, Mr. Pierre is presenting with a resolution. I just gotta sign that, please.
Mr. Pierre, you are city prosecutor and you are operating as a city civil attorney. You are acting in an instable and a grown, not taking such actions upon yourself.
And we asking.
We asking to do it.
That's why, that's why we discuss, we discuss, yeah.
And, and also, let me add that the mayor can get an expedited opinion by virtue of the office. We'll move on to the next, item number ten, introduction of and permitted action.
We have to actually hold them back after later. Never mind.
Yeah, thank you. Item number ten, introduction of and permitted action on proposed ordinances and resolutions. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, adopting a procurement. Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, adopting a procurement policy to serve as guidelines for procurement of supplies, equipment, construction services, and professional services for the LCDBG program established in twenty-four CFR eighty-five thirty-six and state requirement Santa.
Mayor, this, uh, resolution here is updating our procurement, and we, that's how we do things, bidding and all that. And this is, uh, needs action of the council, we adopting what the LCDBG tells us to do, so we're just confirming and writing that we are gonna go by their rules.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion.
Properly moved? And second, any questions, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Okay, item B, ordinance twenty-three forty-two sixty-eight, and ordinance authorized an act of sale by the city of Bashra to sell adjudicated property described parcel zero-two-five-zero-four-four-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-two, lot two of block one, WH Todd Jr.'s subdivision in plot, book one, P one in accordance with L A R S forty-seven, ad twenty-two zero-two, uh, and to authorize the mayor of Bashra to sign all necessary documents and to address other matters relative there to introduction on, Ms. Gordon.
Yes, ma'am, mayor, this is some property that is adjudicated, the city's been on our books a while. We did advertise for bid, and, um, uh, it's German bid on it, so we will just lay it, this, this physical address is nine thirteen Coggers Lane. Uh, we will have it for y'all to act on it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
It's nine thirteen?
Nine thirteen Coggers Lane, and her bid is two thousand one seventy-nine twenty-four.
Other new business. Other new business, item number eleven, appoint two civil service board members, you have in your packets a letter from the state examiner's office. According to our records, the term of office for Mr. James J. Scott and Mr. Walter Moore as the college list board of Bashra Municipal Fire and Civil Service Board will expire, or has expired on December ten, twenty-twenty-two. We are asking the governing authority of your jurisdiction to take steps necessary to ensure these positions are properly filled. Louisiana statute thirty-three twenty-five thirty-six requires in part, two members shall be appointed from a list of four nominees, which shall be furnished within sixty days after the governing authority makes a request, not certified, allow for such list by the executive head of a regular charter and established four-year institution of higher education located within the area served. All of there is no such institu- institution, in the area served by executive head of such an institution which is within the state and which is the most geographically proximate to the area served. Please be advised that the Bashra Civil Service Police, Civil Service Board of the appointed members, a copy of this letter has been sent to the Civil Service Board Secretary, which includes an oath of office for this appointment and a roster of official forms. Please have this oath signed, notarized, and distributed as indicated on the enclosed instructions. Okay, the next page we have is a letter from Dr. Bear from the University of Louisiana, where he rated, there are four names, Ms. Jamie Sharpton, you're present, will you stand up, Ms. Sharpton? And Jewel Gales, Sandra Miller, you're present, will you stand up? Mr. Earl Thaxton. We are boxed in to these four names, we cannot go outside of, uh, the four names on this list as presented by the university president. My recommendation would be Ms. Sharpton and Ms. Miller. We have to, we have to go by this list, this is by statute.
I have a question, extra question?
Yes, sir.
I, I wasn't aware of it, um, yeah, I got a ton of phone calls when this came out, but and, uh, they was calling me up on behalf of Baltimore.
Yes, sir.
And they was asking me, why was his name, uh?
If this name was not rescinded, these applications go strictly to the university, and they come back, and that's why I presented this, this list. The names have to be on this list, and these were the names submitted to me, and I make up a recommendation of Ms. Sharpton and Ms. Miller, what, what is your recommendation, cause it has to come from these four names?
I don't know, I just think in light of everything going on, maybe we need to table this till next time.
The li- the list of names will not change, it's going to be the four names, these two people have agreed to offer themselves in non-paid positions, so do you have an alternate out of these four names?
No, mayor, but we just operating outside of the point of order right now, that's my concern.
How?
I guess that's my question as well, if, if Mr. Moore, just to get it right in my position, could you have his name in one of the four?
Obviously, he did not submit his name to the president of the university, these names come from the president, Mr. Green. And you have to choose from the names that are provided.
If, if I can offer some light, the way, uh, the appointments go after you turn out, depends on which particular, uh, board member turns out. When that particular board member turns out, if they were like the at-large person, that comes from the university, the university makes that selection. If it's from the police department, the police department make their selection, if it's from the fire department, the fire department make the selection. If it was the mayor's appointment, then she had their selection, so that's how the five members are comprised. But you don't have the authority to, uh, uh, I mean, I wouldn't suggest that you table it, because you never know, the civil service has to perform. And right now, if there are two vacancies, it, uh, they shouldn't fill, because they have a function to perform.
So there's a deadline, uh, Mr. Darlin?
The thing is, you just never know when civil service has to act, because, you know, they, they have a, a, a vital function to perform. And as such, you shouldn't delay, and then you, you may be in a situation where you have only three board members, and they can't make quorum, you know, or they can't vote, or they can't take actions, and civil service is very time-sensitive.
These are names of the four people that we have, mayor?
Yes, ma'am, these were the four names that submitted their resumes to the university, and as you see by virtue of this letter, Dr. Bear sent these four names to me. I made the recommendation of Ms. Jamie Sharpton and Ms. Sandra Miller, and you have to choose from the four names listed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Are we talking, uh, this thing, or two, three, two? Okay. I'm, I'm like, uh, I'm not sure about the vote, but I mean, I don't, and, and it looks like, it looks like.
Is that a motion? Properly moved?
Without these two, who? Who, which, one is Miller and one of them's Thaxton?
No, sir, how Thaxton, one is Jamie Sharpton, and the other one is Sandra Miller.
Are they here tonight, or you just?
Yes, ma'am, would you stand up?
Which one, uh, is Jamie? Okay, these are the two, you Sharpton? Sure.
Sandra Miller.
And Ms. Miller.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Properly moved, and second? Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ladies, uh, Ms. Sharpton, if you'll come, and Ms. Sharpton lives in District B, uh?
It's my district, it's my.
It's, it's your district.
Yes, I live, I live at three oh two Madison Drive, I've lived in Bashra since I was seventeen. I worked in the Morehouse Parish school system for thirty-six years, and I'm, um, retired, and I think that I owe something to the community, I meant to the community, so I was willing to serve with your advocacy.
Thank you, thank you, I think it's always very kind of our citizens who are willing to serve a capacity in a non-paid position. Ms. Miller? Move back here, if you will come, and if, um, Ms. Miller, I believe you are in Mr. Lot's district.
I am, I'm Sandra Miller, six forty-three West Cypress, and it's always good to be home, I'm from Bashra, and whatever I can do to help, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Miller, so retired, first, how many years, Ms. Miller?
Ooh, thirty-six, I have to start counting.
Okay, I want you to tell your age, okay, we can get them sworn in tonight. Are you prepared, Ms. Homer, to administer the oath? Uh, item B, Mr. Ricky Anderson called and canceled. And if the council desires to witness the swearing-in of these two, um, new board members, you may do so, if your preference is to go, then I, go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and you be excused, whichever is your preference. If, uh, Ms. Sharpton, Ms. Miller, if you will come, Ms. Homer will administer the oath, and you can do the oath.
Mayor, I don't know, she's gonna wait, are you ready right now?
Here, I'll put something here.
Is it the will of this council to adjourn this meeting, or would you like to witness the swearing-in of these two civil service board?
I like to witness.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting, and those of you who wish to remain and witness this, it's a all in favor of, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make a motion.
Properly moved?
Second.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.